If folks aren't speaking for a little bit, if you just want to put your mic on mute, then you won't have to worry about making sounds. And just want to say this meeting is being held remotely in accordance with the governor of Massachusetts' March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. And I'm going to skip the roll call. We're all in attendance today. We're going to move right down to number two, which is approval of minutes. Can I get a motion for the May 11th minutes, please?
Make a motion to approve the May 11th, 2020 regular session meeting minutes.
Motion's been made.
Second.
And seconded, discussion. Hearing not all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay. That carries five to zero. Next.
Make a motion to approve the May 18th, 2020 executive session meeting minutes.
Motion has been made.
Second.
Made by Sarah, seconded by Bill, discussion. Hearing not all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. That carries five to zero. May 21.
I'm making a motion to approve May 21st, 2020 regular session meeting minutes.
Motion's been made.
Second.
And seconded by Antonella, discussion. I was not at this meeting, so I'll be abstaining from the vote. All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. And I abstain, so that's four yays and one abstention. Next, please.
To approve June 8th, 2020 executive session meeting minutes.
Motion made by Sarah.
Second.
Seconded by Rich, discussion. Hearing not all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. That carries five to zero. One more, please.
Move to approve the June 8th, 2020 regular session meeting minutes.
Motion made by Sarah.
Second.
Seconded by Bill, discussion. Hearing not all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. That carries five to zero. Any committee or subcommittee communications today? Hearing none, we're going to keep moving. We have superintendent's report 4.1.1, schools' end of year presentation. Mr. Smith.
Okay, thank you. So we have three schools with us this evening. We have Meadowbrook Elementary, Berchton Park Middle School, and East Long Meadow High School. A little different, obviously, in a Zoom format, presenting end of the year, and also very different in terms of how we operated from March 16th onward. So tonight, we're going to lead off with Meadowbrook School, and I believe they have a video for us, so I will hand it off to Mrs. Dakin and Mrs. Lowey.
All right. Hello, everyone. So I'm going to share the screen right now. Okay. All right. I'm going to unplug my mic. Let's see how this goes. All right. See the screen?
Yep.
Okay.
Students and teachers everywhere are adjusting to the world of online learning. Now, Beth Ward checked through FaceTime with an elementary teacher in East Long Meadow to see how she and her students are doing more than a week in to their new normal.
I teach second grade at Meadowbrook Elementary School in East Long Meadow.
Teacher Joanne Casey is missing her kid.
It's been, you know, sad because I miss my students and I miss seeing them every day.
Counting down the days and hoping they'll be face to face back inside class at Meadowbrook Schools soon.
All hands were on deck as we transitioned to remote learning. Out of the gates, teachers developed experiences for synchronous and asynchronous learning. Students really got to know Gigi, and teachers found creative ways to engage with students.
Hi, boys and girls, it's me, Gigi. I love playing with connecting cubes because they help me with my math. I collected some and put them into a container. I'd love for you to estimate how many are in the container and write down your answer and why you got that answer.
As remote learning shifted into students' homes, our partnership with families and their support to continue engagement was immense. Even furry members of the family were involved during this first grade pet project as Mrs. Tomasi students analyzed and presented data on pets. Science projects weren't canceled. Students grew plants and conducted experiments with household products. And as much as we were in their homes, they were in ours.
So here's that dandelion that I pulled up, and you can see it has a different shape leaf than the silver dollar or the bleeding heart. And we'll take a closer look at its roots.
Ginger and I would like to start in a quick second, make sure you guys are all doing okay, stay in touch with your feelings, good to talk about your feelings and how you're feeling today.
Mrs. Lungarini's class wrote persuasive essays to convince Luke Bryan to join their Zoom.
All right, this last time, see if you can hear the words in your head and just do the signing. Ready?
Students leaned on our specialists: music, art, phys ed, and enrichment for guided asynchronous activities that enriched their quarantine days. They created passion projects and presented them through videos. Though there was distance, we were not out of sight or minds. Our school community stayed connected as classmates found new ways to share, play, and celebrate special days and special talents. The focus on connections and social emotional learning strengthened our engagement.
These are special superpowers that we all have, and they are things that we talk about.
We celebrated the first International SEL Day remotely, and counselors took to the screens to create video lessons.
Together. So I have a little list, and then at the end, you can see there's a blank space, so you could fill in another one for an idea that you have.
Students sent in or recorded responses to counselors, posted private lessons on Flipgrid, in response to a gratitude sprint lesson.
I'm grateful for my friends, my mom, my new stuffy little dragon, I'm grateful for you.
And we were grateful to find new ways to maintain old traditions.
Welcome to our production of The Family of Earth by Shiv Shimon.
Dear children of the earth, I'm writing because I need your help. Do you know who I am? I am Planet Earth.
I would be so humbled if you'd come with me and serve my children. I need your help.
I told them that I always know when they do little things to help me.
I will now end my letter to you. Remember, remember I am your home. If you love me and protect me, I will always be your home forever and ever.
Mrs. Sousa held her annual book ball remotely. Children dressed for the ball and brought their favorite books to share. While it was a different experience than expected, the smiles were still the same. Grade heritage projects became virtual presentations as our youngest students gained Zoom and Chrome experience. Still day was still on.
Say, I promise to.
I promise.
Play fair.
Play fair.
Play dates.
Play dates.
Help others if they need it.
Help others if they need it.
Be a good sport.
Be a good sport.
Have fun.
Have fun.
And above all, try my best.
And above all, try my best.
Video conferencing kept us connected and gave us opportunities to connect to other communities like Pen Pals from Connecticut. We also created new experiences. Spirit days were spent with families and shared online. Our families welcomed us into their home. Mrs. Rinaldi even joined families for bedtime stories.
This was a folk tale. It was written by Tommy DeTola, The Old Tale, and he actually had a cow to call honor for this one.
Families also channeled their creative talents, and they collaborated with staff and students to send messages of our togetherness.
You were with me when we were little. We were with you, you could talk. We were with you when you moved up into the second grade hall.
You care about your whereabouts, your home and your unknowns.
But we're with you where you roam.
While the end of this year was unexpected, we maintained our Meadowbrook learning and connections.
And enhance with kindness.
We can.
Do we persevere and grow?
All right.
Lisa, I loved it. I do want to make one recommendation. I think you should take singing lessons.
Oh, my goodness. Listen, I went out on a limb. I have no voice. I have terrible. But listen, I went out of my comfort zone, okay? I agree with you.
Very, very good production. Very good.
Thank you.
It's amazing what the teachers were able to get done with the students so quickly.
It really is, I'm telling you. Talk about, you know, quick learning and, you know, people coming out of their comfort zone to do this. I also want to give big props to Betsy, who really helped us to create that video. She was like the behind the scenes person, kind of putting it all together for us, though. Our counselor, Betsy Shan.
Mr. Dakin. I'm sorry. What kind of participation would you say you had for an average class in an average day? Can you even just ball pocket for us?
Yeah.
Was it 100% attendance? Was it 80? Was it 50?
So, so it varied. We had, I think, overall, very good participation. We had some classrooms where teachers would say all of the kids showed up or all of the kids were participating. We had some scenarios where we had a lot of kids that would show up or complete a lot of the assignments. A certain percent would show up for the Zoom less, you know, the Zoom lessons. And then we had some scenarios where it was a smaller percentage, but I think it was always over, always over 50%, and some was 100%. We had a range overall. It was, it was good participation.
Thank you for that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, anything else for Lisa? No. Thank you, Lisa, so much.
You're welcome.
Started off, Lisa.
Thank you.
So next up, I believe we have the middle school. And Dr. Allen and Mr. Martin, I don't know who's going to take over the screen, but both of them will walk us through.
Yeah, I'm going to share my screen. Thank you, everybody. Good to see everybody. Hope everybody's staying happy and healthy and sane and all that. We do not have an engaging video. We apologize. We have slides, but hopefully you'll find it informative nonetheless. So we broke it out by our three goals. So Mr. Martin is going to take the first one of supporting the whole child.
All right. Hello, everybody. Can everybody hear me all right?
Yes.
Great. Okay, so before we left, if you remember, before we left, our major focus was on preparing a system to support our MTSS work. That means that we were focusing heavily on our boss kids, which is our buffet of supports, meeting regularly with teams to create specific and individualized action plans to maximize the time that we had with our students who were identified as needing extra support. We were focusing on a book study to continue to build empathy around with trauma in their background. And the biggest push that we had before we left would have been to focus for the second half of the year on ways to utilize iReady to its fullest degree in order to make the most out of our tutorial time. But of course, that's when the pandemic hit. With that said, I'm very proud of the work of the teachers and the support staff and the students and the parents of Berchton Park Middle School, who all rallied together during this unprecedented time to make sure that even though we weren't in the building, our students were still getting the most out of the learning experience itself. So during learning, to support the whole child, we'd had a number of endeavors. The first bullet point is a staff video that we put together. And I'm just not going to, just so you guys know, I'm not going to click on each of these links just for the sake of time, but I would recommend clicking on them at some point because the work that was put in throughout the building, as identified in these links, it's extraordinary stuff. So with this, with the staff video right after April break, it was around the time, if I remember correctly, that it was announced that we weren't coming back. In order to make sure that we weren't forgetting our kids, the majority of our staff put together a video to just show our love and our support to our kids that reinforced the message that even though we weren't in the building, we were still a school. And that went over very, very well, and we're very proud of that. With podcasts, we made sure that it was important to check in with our kids and interview them using the podcast that we have through Podbean and iTunes. If you haven't checked out Schooling yet, a Bird Part's podcast, I strongly recommend it. We take advantage of the situation, students' perspective on what life might look like at this time, because we had, we didn't have a perspective that we could draw on, so it was important to get it in real time. With the virtual processing session on racism, clearly, our country and the world is forced to have challenging conversations with the role of race within our society. And as an institution, we owe it to our kids to be able to process their feelings on racism. So for over an hour, 11 students and 11 staff members shared their feelings on what's occurring in the world, our place within it. It was fantastic. It was therapeutic for me selfishly, but it was great to see the conversation occurring with the students and the adults around an incredibly difficult topic that most adults don't know how to have with each other. With the eighth grade parade and graduation, this one was important because one thing I love is middle school in the spring, especially for our eighth graders. And our eighth graders were robbed of the springtime traditions at Berchton Park. The semi, the High Meadow Field Trip, the end of the year concerts, the film festival, the play, the dance, the award ceremony. We weren't able to recreate every experience, but we managed to put together a video to simulate the award ceremony itself so that the students had closure and a feeling of success for not only concluding their time at Berchton Park, but concluding their time at Berchton Park during a time unlike any other. Finished the year off with a parade at school on Friday, which was as therapeutic for the kids as it was for all of us. It was cathartic, and it really brought together a sense of normalcy. And I think that we can all agree that normalcy is something that we're all yearning for right now. And so it was just wonderful and celebratory, we had wanted it to be. Reading books aloud to the elementary school kids. This was one of the challenges that I had been sending out to students and staff to keep them creatively engaged in their classes. This particular challenge asked them to read children's books to the elementary school, elementary schools. And we had a number of students and staff members, which was great. And so in this particular challenge, we were not just doing something creative, but we were also giving back to the community as well. Student support numbers. This is one we are going to click on because this one was the heartbeat of our online experience. So right from the beginning, we understood that if we weren't communicating with our families, we just were not going to be successful at all during the online experience. It was important for us as partners to the parents to understand what we could do for families and for our kids, and if there was any information that our teachers needed to know. So if you look at the spreadsheet, you'll see just the way that this is broken up. Each column is the number of outreach that our student support team put out per team. As you can see, there's the total. On the far left, there is families that are teams that had to make one call per family or two calls per family or three or more calls per family. So the way that this was organized was weekly, the teachers sent me a list of students who were not engaging in their class and students who were not engaging in three or more classes. I was able to provide a number to the student support team who got a weekly caseload, who was then, they were able to then reach out to those families to provide whatever support that was needed during this time. So the total student, number of student families that were contacted by phone, just about 200. Total conversations with families was 384. And then at the bottom there, in the last stretch, every student that was running the risk of failing a class, while we still had time to be able to turn around, received an email from me. So the parents and the child received an email from me identifying what classes they were struggling in and trying to just let them know that there was still time left, that the year was not over, and we wanted to see them succeed. So outreach was the biggest, like I said, it was the heartbeat of the online experience of us over the finish line. To provide some extra support for students that continued to struggle despite the student support outreach that we had in place, Tim was able to visit a number of houses of struggling students from a safe distance, of course, mask on in the driveway, just to provide that extra level of accountability and support to make sure that the kids were doing what they were supposed to do. With the students' feedback survey, you know, we were, all of us were building the plane as we were flying it, and that was going to lead naturally to some turbulence here and there. But the good news is we did not crash the plane. I think that will be. But with that said, if the fall has any sort of online learning, we want to make sure that the flight is as smooth as it possibly can be. So we needed to know what our students' experience was on their end with the online learning experience so that we can continue to fine tune it so that if there were any pockets that were just rough or weren't working for the kids, we could avoid and replace with something that was working in the fall. Our student support website, our student support team created their own website full of links and resources to help families and students throughout the stay at home order. And then last but not least, weekly Zoom meetings. I think that at this point, we are all zoomed out, but nevertheless, it was essential to recreate the in-person experience as much as possible. So we had weekly meetings with all of our teams to see how things were going, to share any updates or latest news from our end of things, to elicit feedback from the teams, quite frankly, just at times, just to talk and see how everybody was doing, what they've been watching, to just continue those relationships and to just create a sense of normalcy as much as possible to get everyone through this experience. So that's it for supporting the whole child.
For instructional practice, before we left, we were focusing on a lot of different things: standards-based grading in math, iReady ELA in math. Lexia PowerUp was in our tiered reading program. ST Math, we're continuing to increase. Albert IO, Jog Nog, ELA, Priority Standards Assessments and Mastery Connect. And then we were also developing web-based curriculum usage in many subjects, which turned out to help us a lot in distance learning, including Envision, Math, Amplify, TCI, et cetera. So I'm going to go really fast, but during online learning, we had weekly assignments were sent to students and family by the team. Quick example, there was different ways this was done. This was one of our teams, and this, they created their own website. If you see here, they had all assignments for the core classes on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. They updated this weekly, and then they had different, you could backlog, go to the other assignments. So we worked very hard. These were their iReady superstars from the week. And they worked, we worked very hard to make sure that we were communicating both to students and families, the expectations of learning every week. Not good at this going back and forth yet. We did a lot of different Zoom trainings with teachers, especially once we realized we needed to increase, and especially in preparing for the learning. So won't click on it, but we made a lot of modeling and professional development for them over Zoom, about Zoom. We have a frequently asked questions document, which outlined a lot of our instructional practices for parents, practices for parents. And we updated that FAQ every week, and I would email to parents with new information to make sure we were communicating well. We were very, very, very proud. We decided to build sort of a second learning environment. We had a lot of kids going above and beyond, so we had this enrichment activities document, which updated every single week with new things. We had a virtual talent show. We had Spirit Fridays, seventh and eighth grade lunch bunch. Art club opened up to any student. They did all sorts of projects. You can see with every one of these, it came with a Google Meet. We had live yoga classes every week, live body weight and cardio workouts. We had a weekly fitness session with a math teacher who also coaches at the high school. I even did dribble workouts with students on the basketball court. We had a cooking series done by one of our counselors. So we really just tried to invent this whole other environment that students can learn in. There was a math series, a bunch of cool YouTube videos. There was a book club that any student could join that met weekly on Tuesdays on the Divergent series. We had creative writing projects led by our librarian. We had a Steam coding, online story and game festival. I'll show you a link to that later. So we did our best to really create this second learning environment where we could really give kids that wanted to do more, more to do, and that was one of our biggest successes. Obviously, our teachers had office hours every week, and that was when students could go in and get extra help from them at a guaranteed time every week. And then, of course, when it came to instructional practice, we, we worked on the standards that the, that the state designated as the most important standards, and we worked in our departments to make sure those were going to be delivered before the end of the school year. And then for the third goal, learning and achievement, before we left, we were really working on an improved use of diagnostics and individualized learning programs. And then we were really trying to continue our balance of evidence-based learning and a positive student learning experience. So we tried to continue both of those. When we first went home, we made iReady a recommendation, but we did not make it part of the classroom. We took data on that for about two weeks and realized we weren't getting enough usage that way. So then we had our English and math teachers make it part of their classrooms that students do 30 minutes per week. So basically, one of their days was that their students should be doing iReady. We had our coaches oversee this, and I'll just show you this quickly, but they took data every week to make sure. And you can see, like, in grade six, 89% of our students participated in iReady at some level, on an average of 22 minutes per week, and they, 60% of the lessons were passed on the first try. So we had data on sixth, seventh, and eighth, and then we had data on math for how that went as well. And on top of that, we also had our coaches weekly monitoring with the teachers. So this is another example. This is one English teacher, and this is one week. So this would have been my literacy coach that created this. And 54% of the students used iReady that week, on average, for 30 minutes per student. I've taken out the names here, but student A actually had a name, and the status was that they were shut off or struggling, and the domain was comprehension or vocab. So for this teacher, it's not all of their kids, it's their kids that were listed as struggling. And so this way, the coach and the teacher could be in communication, and they could work on how to make sure these kids got what they needed to dive back in and keep working in iReady. So we tried to use iReady as best we could as an individualized learning platform that would keep students moving forward, and we put a lot of time with our coaches, especially in our teaching. as an individualized learning platform that would keep students moving forward. And we put a lot of time with our coaches, especially and our teachers into that. Morning announcements, I did morning announcements virtually twice a week, Mondays and Thursdays. I apologize if any of you had to watch those. They are very loud, enthusiastic and probably annoying early in the morning, but they are fun and they definitely helped get some, get some middle schoolers out of bed and going in the morning. For our STEAM festival, this was very cool. This was outside of the regular school environment and these were all different STEAM projects that students did, all different, it was all coding. And some of these are just amazing. If you click on them, I won't do that, but you do have access to it if you want. So a lot of different, a lot of different ways that we looked at learning and achievement. We had virtual field day. We had, I think, 10 live events. I ran a game of horse versus 17 students in my backyard via Zoom. And there was nine other live events and then there were 15 on-demand events that day as well. There was a talent show, as I said, it's a 10-minute video, it's very cool. And Mr. Martin continued his creativity challenges to make sure students were being challenged that way as well. So we focused a lot on all three goals and did a lot of cool stuff and I'll just finish with some pictures. One of my favorite things about the pictures teachers shared with me or videos along the way was it was just cool to see even when they were home, how much students were creating. It almost felt like students may have even been creating more once we got home. So just some cool pictures here to show you, science phases of the moon projects. I see two very different ways to do that. We had seventh grade geography go on virtual field trips led by national parks. So this is some of them on that. This was the festival kickoff meeting for our STEAM festival on Google Meet. Research projects as done by some science students. These are just examples of slides in the research projects that they did on different geneticists. Even our health students making memes about the different muscle systems that they were learning about. Very cool way for them to demonstrate what they know and have fun while the computer science students created artwork of their favorite Marvel or Disney characters using conditional formatting within Google Slides, creating some pretty cool masterpieces here, obviously. And then these were some images that students created for population density to demonstrate that they had mastered that skill. So we were really proud. Just feel like we offered a very diverse program for students and for families. Feel we gave them a lot of different ways to engage. Rich, Mr. Fertiero, sorry, to answer your question that you asked Lisa. We felt that engagement most weeks hovered somewhere between 80 and 85%. We, of course, had some spots where we would get up over 95%. We, of course, had some dips where we would be in the 70 to 75%. But Connor cannot underestimate the value of the student support team's work. All those phone calls. If a kid slipped off the tracks, they were hearing from us. And to reach out to 199 families and each of those conversations is 10 to 20 minutes long because it's, you know, the family wants to talk. We're all in quarantine. So we really focused on that. And then when we were really losing kids, that's when the student support team sent me out to start doing home visits. And I was in driveways and I was in backyards and I was getting kids out of bed at 12:30 in the afternoon and then they were with their principal at 12:32 in the driveway. So we worked really hard to offer a comprehensive online learning system that did a lot of different things and we were psyched with how it went considering everything we were up against.
Dr. Val, Mr. Man, I had the pleasure of observing AIC student Ms. Kavanaugh. I must say that those Zoom classes were so impressive to be able to observe a teacher teaching students through Zoom. Participation was high and the thought processes were amazing among the students.
Thank you. That's good to hear.
Okay, any other questions or comments for Burchland?
This is a great job, Connor and Tim. I mean, it was very thoughtful and very informing. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Hopefully you get a chance to hit some of those links, but like I said, we wanted to go as fast as we could at least.
I tried to hit, it wouldn't, it wouldn't come on. I tried to, yesterday they wouldn't click.
They should. I'll share it to you again. I don't know what happened.
Yes, I'm going by the school committee packet. So that's why it was in Google Drive, it wouldn't click on.
Because it's a PDF now, that's why.
Yeah, it was scanned, scanned as into the copier. So what we will need to do is send you a download of it.
What have you seen? I can share it right now to all five of them. That's not a problem.
Okay.
I appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Great. Thank you.
I think one of the themes you're seeing is, and we weren't sure that we were going to be able to pull this off, is that even though it was far different how we connected with our families and our students, starting in that week of March 16th, we were able to successfully continue to connect with them and continue the learning and probably most importantly, continue the social and emotional support. And each school did a fantastic job in making that happen and keeping the communication up. And I'm sure that we're going to see similar things as Mr. Page and Mr. Wright start to present the high schools' spring and end of the year report.
Okay, that was a good transition.
Yes, there we are.
Good evening.
Okay, so Gary's going to start us off with the first goal, but the one thing I just want to quickly highlight is just the the team effort that was put forth during this entire closure. I can definitely highlight that with the leadership team in terms of the times that we all came together as a group. But if you're looking specifically at the high school, you know, just from admin to staff, to students, parents, even community members. You know, we did work with some of the businesses in town. We did work with Elcat. There is no way for all this to be accomplished without everyone coming together as a team. So it was just awesome to see across the board and to see all the effort that not just the staff put in, but but everyone. So with that, I'm going to let Gary take over and talk a little bit about how we tackled that first goal of supporting the whole child. I'm going to pull up our presentation.
So we, for this, for this goal, we we started in the fall by, we were really working on identifying the different supports that we had in our building and we were, we were working really hard on pushing people through their comfort zones towards, towards creating things that that would support individual students. And so, you know, we were one-on-one meetings with guidance counselors who would then take those conversations to teachers. We were doing, really building an MTSS model with our guidance team and pushing that out. See, that that list, trying to generate that list of the things that we had available that would, that would help kids who were struggling was taking up a lot of our fall. We were making really good momentum as we, as we rounded that curve into January and February and into March. We had, I would say, that would easily a cup, two dozen kids on on very specific plans that would, that were intended to help them with some form of either a social, emotional support or or give them academic support that they were looking for. And then when we came to the closure, we, we really focused on soliciting feedback before we dug into a, a hard plan. The first couple of weeks were very, very unique. It was a bit of a lull. It was teachers giving students some assignments and supporting them through it. And we really didn't have a very clear structure in terms of when classes would be meeting. And so as we met with, I think we met with around 60 students, Frank and I, in different Zoom meetings. And then we met with another, I want to say 50 parents, like a couple of weeks later. And we just kept hearing these, these themes in the feedback from parents and from students. And the themes drove the work that we did then. And we were lucky, prior to the announcement of the, the extended closure, we had already put into place a new schedule that, that actually carried us through the rest of the year. And so because of the feedback from the parents and the feedback of the students, we had created a schedule where students knew that they could, they would be getting their assignments by 8:00 AM or I think it was by 9:00 AM on, on any given day. They would, they knew that they would be meeting with a specific block of a class at a specific time. They knew that every Friday was an opportunity to, to fully devote to getting one-on-one support or small group support from their teachers. We built plans specific to our special ed department so that students on IEPs had their own times to receive support from their special ed liaison who then could support them inside of their, their, their one-on-one meetings or their small group meetings with teachers. We, you know, we didn't intentionally build a schedule that was meant to last after the extended closure, but we sort of just fell into it. And so we had done that work and so we were able to shift now to enhancing our, the ways that we supported kids. And so, you know, as, as some of our feedback that we pushed to the faculty from the kids was around students saying they're working full-time. Mom lost her job and she's the only adult in the house. And so now we would come across students that were working full-time just, just to be able to keep paying the bills in the house. We came across kids who, who were caring for siblings so that mom or dad or mom and dad could be, could be at work. And so we used that to really push our faculty to say, listen, we have to offer instruction that is accessible at any time for students because these are the things that kids are going through. And so if a teacher were to say to us, you know, I was missing quite a few kids from my, my, my hangout today. Okay, so let's talk through that, you know, and we would do these, we'd have these conversations in our, in our weekly faculty check-ins where we would push people and say, you know, consider what the sixteen, seventeen and eighteen-year-olds are doing. Don't focus on necessarily that one moment in time, focus on their overall engagement. And so we were kind of, we were able to calibrate and and then develop a system for students to get feedback on their assignments rather than just a no credit or a credit. It wasn't just a zero or a hundred. It was, hey, you know, we're, we're, we're on track to implement this feedback and resubmit it to me. Or, you know, it was more of a, it was an opportunity to improve rather than just, nope, not going to happen. It's a zero, we're moving on. And so our, our biggest, our biggest focus really was on, on making sure that whatever we were doing was meeting the needs of, of the students and the parents as they were saying it to us from, you know, face to face through these Zoom calls. Our, our guidance team was a huge asset to this program. So our, our teachers, when they came across students who weren't engaging, we had a really clear system where, where teachers would communicate these, this information to the guidance team. And then our guidance counselors were in one-on-one Zoom meetings, one-on-one Google Hangouts. We were calling home, making sure that parents understand, you know, hey, we have a schedule here. Here's the schedule. Here's how it works. And, you know, once, once we were able to really broadcast the system, we had, our, our teachers were really pleased with the, the way that students engaged with their, with their coursework, you know, from week to week. So the, I think the other, I think there's one other thing. The, I think the biggest thing for us was consistency in, in communication. You know, as we heard from parents, you know, it was, it was hard for, for some students to, to get information from teachers in different ways. And the assignments come from one teacher in this way and another teacher in that way. And so by that extended closure, we had already unified all those systems so that students knew exactly what was going to be happening from week to week. And it was a consistency between, you know, how teachers were spreading that information.
All right. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the, our instructional practice school and some stuff that we were doing prior and then how we transitioned into our, our remote learning experience. So prior to the closure, we were working through the fall into the winter. Really, our focus was in, in two areas. One, it was getting our teachers to adapt to the one-to-one environment with, with computers in their classrooms and how to effectively engage learners utilizing those devices. Not just, obviously, having kids, you know, typing out essays, but just finding ways to engage in 21st century skills. The second thing that we worked on with individual departments, we, we took time to, let me just jump the slide here, sorry. We, we took time to work with individual departments to take a more targeted approach to, to drive instruction and improve practices within those departments by starting to set up these individual department meetings with those department heads. Really, the idea behind that was to dig into curriculum and assessment work that was being done within those departments. When we transitioned into remote learning, we obviously, we had to flip the script a little bit and take a much different approach to how we were going through the year. And we, we spent that time by really structuring out our weeks to first meet the needs of our kids, but obviously also meet the needs of our staff. So each week was structured for 13 weeks where on Mondays, we worked with our department heads to, to talk about different ways of, of going through a remote learning environment and make sure that we were both meeting what are the needs of our students were, but also, you know, following along with the state guidelines that were being pushed out every couple of weeks. On Tuesdays, we would take that information that we worked with department heads on. On Mondays, we would take that to the full staff on Tuesdays and vet that through them process. And then from there, all that information would be transitioned to the Wednesday meetings where departments would meet in their, in their small groups and, and continue that work. Wednesdays was also a day where we would meet with our guidance department. So based on Sunday feedback we're getting from earlier in the week on Mondays and Tuesdays, either from department heads or from our teachers, both on what they were seeing in terms of engagement or what they were seeing from the students who were struggling, we would, we would meet with our guidance staff to to go through our stand meeting and find out which kids might be struggling, which ones might be in need of additional follow-up or services. Then as we move through the week, we get to Fridays, that's where we get into our support blocks for our kids. So I'm not going to spend too much time going through all the links today, but I do have highlighted is that first link there. One, those are the guidelines that collaboratively we built with our, our department heads and our staff to basically take the most equitable approach for all of our students. And then the, the second one just gives you a quick taste, if I can jump over to it. Just an example of what a potential staff meeting might look like where we would, we would calibrate our thinking in terms of both what we were trying to do as a building, but also what we were doing to meet the state guidelines. So jumping back over to our presentation. Okay, so in terms of continuous learning and achievement and going into what we would do with our, with our staff, obviously that you need that to translate into, in terms of what we were looking to do to support our students. So what we ended up coming up with is a, a weekly approach to engagement and learning in our building, I'm sorry, not in our building, but during this closure time. And, and the idea behind that would be that each week our teachers would push out these, these assignments and the structures of what their class that week. And each week, each teacher was asked to give one mandatory assignment, one assignment that would be graded. And then from there, they would obviously, they would include enrichment activities, extra credit activities. So the kids had an opportunity to raise their grades. We tried to create an environment that was equitable for all of our students and that would support the type of learning that they might be going through for, for all learners. As Mr. Wright was highlighting, we, we had a lot of kids who were going through some tough times. I think we saw that at all the schools across, across the district. And we just wanted to make sure that we had an approach that came across as both supportive, but also we want to make sure that we were engaging those students. What you see highlighted down at the bottom of the screen here, just a couple of different examples of what a week might look like for some of our students in terms of what the assignments might look like, what the purpose of the assignments for that week might be. And what I really like about the, these image that you have down at the bottom where the teacher just, she said, the purpose of the following activities is to provide review and enrichment for the lesson. The focus of these activities will be to take care of yourself and support others during stressful times. You know, so she's not only just looking at what the, the assignment is, that's a Spanish assignment, but she's also making sure that she, she embeds a message in there that she does care about those kids and she does want to support them during this time. You know, I thought that was really important. I thought that was a great example of what our staff was all about. So moving forward from there. And, and I think, actually, I'm going to jump to this quick before I jump to the next slide, but this is the, the schedule that Mr. Wright was speaking to in terms of our remote learning schedule that we pushed out weekly. What you can see here is how the blocks would rotate each week when our teachers would run their support blocks for their classes. So as you can see, a block would run on Mondays and Wednesdays and that's where our teachers would have Google Hangout set up to meet with their students and talk about what they were supposed to be covering that week. And then from there, you know, go through the assignments and the materials that, that would be being assigned. And then, as you can see, each block would meet twice a week. They would have those support blocks for each class twice a week. Then you get to Fridays, that's where you have those extra help days to follow up on any learning. We ran this schedule every single week from the first week of April through, through the last week in June where we had classes. And, you know, it worked well in terms of getting the kids at least twice a week where they would engage in their specific classwork, but then they would also have that additional week. I'm sorry, that additional block at the end of the week to get that extra help. And at the bottom, you can see where we hosted those weekly meetings for both department heads, the faculty check-ins and then the, the departments would have their individual meetings. All right. Let me see here. All right. So just some quick remote learning highlights. I think we spent a decent amount of time just talking about some of the big picture structures that we have put in place, but obviously when you, when you dig in, there's a lot of stuff that was happening, obviously, at individual classroom level. There are some links here that kind of highlights some of the different things that were going on at the high school and some of the things we tried to do to Um, there are some links here that, that kind of highlights some of the different things that were going on at the high school and some of the things we tried to do to bring some normalcy, uh, to these, um, abnormal times. Uh, so every spring, we've always run a spring academic achieve night, achievement night. Um, this year, we're obviously unable to run that. So we were able to put together a virtual ceremony to highlight and celebrate all of those students and all of their achievements over their, uh, their high school career. Um, we did, uh, still run our staff recognition week at the beginning of May where each day we tried to do different things to celebrate and, um, you know, uh, support our staff. Uh, so here you can see a screenshot of a video that our key club put together, um, and, uh, all the students in the key club are just, um, basically saying thank you to all, all the staff that, that have worked for them for, um, over the course of the year. We still even ran our little big kids virtual graduation this spring. Um, obviously, little, little different in terms of how we ran that, um, from, from a traditional year, but we still try to have all those types of ceremonies and events that, uh, we would typically have, uh, in a traditional year. Um, and then I think the thing that we have to highlight the most here is, uh, I know Mr. Martin talked a little bit about the, things that they tried to do to celebrate and support their eighth graders because they did miss out on a lot. Uh, the group that, that we've been focusing on, we've been talking about all of our kids and, and trying to celebrate, um, and support them, uh, throughout this closure. But the group that we've really been talking about a lot is our seniors. And that class of twenty twenty who they missed out on their, their spring banquet, they missed out on their prom. Um, and, I think the thing where they missed out on their spring sports season, there's been a lot of things we've been trying to do to, uh, obviously you can't replace those experiences, but try to, uh, continue to support those kids as they move through this tough time. So if you, uh, if you've been following along with us during, during the closure, we've done a lot of stuff to try to celebrate these kids. Uh, and, and I think this goes back to what we've been saying from the beginning that we really spent a lot of time, um, putting forth a team effort and making sure that, uh, the entire staff is involved in celebrating these students. Uh, so, the last weekend in April, uh, I'm sorry, yeah, the last weekend in April, we went around town and stuck these yard signs in every single one of our seniors' yards. Uh, and we had over sixty staff who volunteered to help us out. So it wasn't just, uh, Mr. Wright and I, but we had the entire staff on board with that. Uh, if you go to the last weekend in May, we also had our cap and gown day where we had, uh, reverse parade set up in the parking lot and our seniors drove through to, to say goodbye to our staff one last time in, in full. Uh, they, they came through, they got their cap and gown, they got their student records, uh, they got their yearbooks. And it was just an awesome day where we had, uh, three hours to really just interact and celebrate those kids. And, and it was a great experience. Uh, and those, for those of us who, um, for those of you who joined us last weekend, we, we had the first round of our graduation ceremony, where, uh, we had about approximately thirty of our students who decided to, uh, get their diplomas in June. Um, the, the remainder of our senior class is hoping and, um, anticipating a, a fuller ceremony in July, in which, uh, right now we're in the process of planning. Um, and that's targeted right now for July thirty-first. Uh, so, you know, really hoping that the, the data supports us, being able to bring that senior class together one last time. And we really can, um, give them the send-off that they deserve. All right. All right.
Hi, it's Frank. Compliments to you and, uh, Gary for that, uh, June thirteenth, uh, mini graduation. That was quite impressive how well organized it was and how, um, effective it was. There was a lot of emotions involved there. You, you two did a wonderful job in organizing that and recognizing those students.
Thank you. That was, that was a lot of fun. We really enjoyed that day. Um, the kids seemed to appreciate it. Family seemed to appreciate it. And, uh, for the restrictions that are currently in place for the month of June, um, I thought it was a proper send-off for, uh, the kids who are ready to receive their diplomas.
So I know when we originally started out, uh, in this process of going online, um, we had talked about, in terms of grading, no harm.
Um, yeah.
I want to certainly give credit to the staff, uh, having a high schooler and a person, staff, uh, person, park student. Um, they were engaged, uh, the workload seemed appropriate. It needed to have some sort of a schedule to have some sort of normalcy. So I, I applaud that. But I'm wondering, um, students who had to convert to all of a sudden, uh, virtual learning, potentially some of them may have, uh, I don't know. I think someone said follow.
Yeah.
If, if that happened, if we saw that, or did, did we, I know, how did we address that? Well, my, I guess my point was I can, I can see, where students were ticking right along through the school year, normal school years they've done for ten, twelve years and to completely change it. Um, some of us don't always have the intrinsic motivation and, and need the, uh, face-to-face contact. Maybe address that a little bit?
Yeah, of course. So, uh, one of the things that the state has said from the beginning, and we really tried to make an effort to do was, uh, make sure that the kids were held harmless. You know, so if a kid was, let's say, like you, I think we were highlighting, let's say, passing in March. And then when they hit this closure, they fell off a cliff. Uh, one of the things we did, um, both with our seniors at the end of their, uh, their time with us, and then we did it again this past week, um, we had the teachers submit to us all of their students, who, um, may have been passing on, on March thirteenth and then ended up, uh, with a failing grade after March thirteenth, um, when, when grades closed. And, uh, we, we reviewed all those records and, uh, you know, worked within those to see if those kids should have, um, received a passing grade, you know. So, um, I've been going actually through all those this week and we've been working with our guidance staff, uh, going through to make sure that those kids are not necessarily, uh, held negatively accountable for, um, being unable to successfully adapt to this new environment.
Yeah. And so what we did, uh, Mr. Thompson was, I mean, amongst the stuff you saw with all the phone calls and all the, uh, organized reach out and the visits. Um, we graded kids in every class every Friday. So every Friday, and this is in my frequently asked, he's documenting a whole description of this, but every Friday, parents got essentially a progress report once a week. Um, and I was a parent during all this of a seventh grader and a fourth grader. So I think that helped me see both sides of it. And I knew that what I really wished I could have gotten is just one score on Friday. So I would know if I'm happy with them on the weekends. Um, that's what we did. So every Friday, every kid got six through seven grades. Um, a one, two, three or four in each class. A three was the target. We, we followed a standards-based grading model where a three is like, you did everything you're supposed to do. Nice job. A four was completely above and beyond. Like you just, how did you do all of that? Um, a two was you did work, you can still step it up. And a one was you did little or no work at all. So what that allowed us to do was really every Friday, focus our efforts on engaging kids that were not engaged. So we didn't have to wait. And that's what Mr. Martin did. Every teacher in the school emailed Mr. Martin every Friday with every kid that got a one. And then he had one big central data sheet where he'd input these. And like he said, if people were, if kids were getting two or three or more or ones, then that's when we would reach out. So I think that helped minimize that problem. Now, all that said, um, we still, at the end of it all, we graded pass fail. Um, you know, I met with my counselors today at nine o'clock on Zoom. And the first thing they were doing today was going through every kid who failed a class for term three and four online. And they were looking back at how they had did in terms one and two, to make sure that we were holding them harmless overall, if we could at all, right? So, um, so that's tomorrow at nine AM. I meet with them again on Zoom and they're gonna have a spreadsheet of every kid that failed and what they were doing before we went home. So if a kid is like C, C, F, I mean, totally gonna, of course be held harmless. If a kid was in school, F, F, and then at home, F, you know, then we gotta look at, does this kid need more supports or should, you know, there's, there is online summer school going on out of Westfield, out of Agawam. Same programs we use are doing it, uh, remotely. So totally in on holding them harmless, but definitely monitoring as we go. And the weekly grades changed everything for us. That made it a weekly endeavor to keep an eye on them, uh, which helped with our twelve and thirteen-year-olds.
Yeah. And if I can just chime in quickly too, in, in terms of what Tim is saying as well. So we, when we shifted to, uh, starting to keep the, hold the kids accountable in early April, uh, one of the things we wanted to do to make sure that we, um, made that equitable is, uh, we pushed our teachers to not necessarily grade on the right or wrong answers, but more grade along the lines of effort and, and quality. Um, where if they felt the student wasn't necessarily, uh, up to par, they could ask for, um, you know, corrections. Uh, but if students, um, submitted bally work and, and they put forth that effort, uh, then, you know, they would receive full credit, which is basically equated to a hundred. So, uh, a lot of our students had opportunities to, uh, raise their averages, um, and i- improve their overall standing in those courses. And we just stressed to, um, our teachers time and again, during this time, um, when possible, we gotta try to find ways to not hold these kids negatively accountable. So, um, we're working with the kids who may have failed. Or, uh, we're reviewing all those grades right now and also for the kids who engaged. Uh, every grade they submitted was an opportunity for them to raise their standing in that course.
So.
Oh, go ahead. Sorry.
I, I was just gonna. For school, um, we communicated with teachers and asked them to contact, um, Mrs. Lodi, myself and the counselors, if they noticed that students were not as engaged or if they weren't able to really connect with them. Um, we did find out that we were, were, um, one-to-one, um, grades two and up. Um, but we actually were able to, um, provide additional, um, devices and some of the older Chromebooks for any family that needed it. And initially we had, um, you know, Renee up, um, in the gymnasium where parents, we had a pickup. Um, but then later on, we found out that there were some families that maybe they had one device, maybe a middle schooler was using it. And they found, you know what, this isn't gonna work. We need another, uh, device. Um, we also, uh, followed up with phone calls as well. Um, you know, just to kind of see how can we support the parents. Um, we decided as far as with, um, sharing, um, progress and with report cards. Um, when we met with the elementary, um, principals altogether, we decided that it was probably best, um, to come up with more of a narrative for the report cards. You can imagine if you're a parent of a kindergartner, how very different it is when the kindergartner is working on Zoom or they're working on, um, you know, some of these, um, online, um, programs that they need a lot more support. So we decided to use more of a narrative approach and to really focus on what it is the child, um, was able to accomplish. Um, you know, for example, um, what was the usage with ST math or, um, with Lexia?
Yeah. And all I was gonna add, of some kids that were so hard to engage that we took them out of the regular system. And we built an individualized program where they might be like meeting with a guidance counselor live on Google meets twice a week and us doing I-ready. And like, if they could just do those two things, we would celebrate it to no end. So we did end up, creating the, the beginning of a creation of like an internal alternative school, when really it was an emergency to get the kids up and going. Just like you said, Mr. Thompson, because of the intrinsic motivation. That was, that, that could be challenging.
Great. Thank you for all that information. Also wondering, you know, with the uniqueness of this year, certainly again acknowledging how the staff sort of stepped up and, fully engaged in the process, but it has been a unique year. How are we standing relative to prior years or other years? Are we, far behind? Are we close to where we might have been in terms of, uh, benchmarks and such? Um, just briefly, if each school wants to just hit on that, that topic and what we're up against in the future, I guess, too.
So I, I, I guess I can start, um, from the high school level. We're, we know we're gonna be facing some gaps. Um, you know, like if you look at something as simple as the Algebra One, uh, curriculum, um, just with starting the, the remote learning with purely enrichment and, uh, really not getting into a lot of the new material until, um, early May. Uh, we know there's gonna be gaps that we're gonna have to close when we roll into our geometry courses in the fall. Uh, we're, we're expecting to, uh, see similar gaps in some of our foreign language courses. Um, we had, we had started structuring, uh, some review classes that we're gonna be, uh, running for the Biology MCAS because we're expecting to have to, our students ta- uh, take that test next year. Fortunately, they don't have to. Um, but we are starting to identify areas where we're expecting to see gaps and, and, adapt when we return in the fall.
Yeah. So for us, uh, certainly there's gonna be gaps. Um, in three of our four core classes, we have web-based curriculum. So, we, we definitely, for better or worse, we, we kind of proceeded with new material like right from the jump. So, you know, we didn't go at the same rate by any means, but we, we did not spend a lot of time just reviewing, uh, because they were used to using web-based curriculum. So we could continue using it. Um, there's definitely gonna be gaps. There's definitely gonna be gaps. Um, you know, I think it was really helpful and I'm, I'm drawing a blank on what the wording was, but, when the state put out their like essential standards, it was like a level above priority standards. It was like a, you have to have these to continue in the next grade level. Um, we led department work with that. Our department heads did a great job and they led meetings focused on just those standards. And every department covered all of those standards and then some. But that said, uh, I'm not gonna act like we were emulating the classroom. So there's definitely gonna be gaps. Um, but, you know, departments stayed in touch, departments met every other week. And so I, I like to think, um, that their communication will lead it to where it matters most, which is really, English kind of covered all the same standards anyways. They probably just didn't get to hammer them home as much. Math is the big one. Spanish is the big one. Uh, science is a big one. Uh, but they've communicated, they hit the essential standards. It's just gonna be the same problem the whole world is dealing with. So we'll be fine.
Yeah. And, um, similar to what, um, both Frank and Tim said, there's definitely gonna be gaps because, you know, um, this just doesn't replace that live teaching that the kids get when they're in, um, you know, actively engaged in, in front of the teachers. Um, and I think that it's really hard to tell exactly where we are because a lot of the assessments that we're utilizing right now, such as, you know, AVMR and BASS is one-on-one, you know. So we're gonna find out a lot more info, you know, information and, we're gonna find out where exactly they are come fall. But we all know that we are gonna have to start the year with a lot of review.
And that's something, Mr. Thompson, that we've been discussing as a leadership team is that we know, uh, the beginning of our year is, going to have to focus on review. It was, as all of our principals have said, um, very helpful from, to receive from the department what they feel the essential standards are. So that's something that now is uniform across the state. Um, I think all districts are planning for, uh, review as they begin the new school year. Uh, and hopefully this week we'll have some more indication as to what that new school year may look like.
Hopefully.
Hopefully.
For us.
Dr. Wells, do you wanna talk about maybe some of the successes or challenges that, uh, some of your students may have faced?
Sure. Um, I, I, in the get-go, I think to just sort of mirror what everybody else has said, I, I, um, I can't say enough for how our staff worked very creatively to engage students and to support them. Um, some students obviously, um, need tremendous amount of support, which they get every day. And, and those students, have been identified, um, in all of the discussions about reopening and, and how those needs are gonna be considered a little bit, a little bit differently. Um, we were very generous this year in terms of, um, looking at criteria for extended school year, um, with the understanding that, you know, many of our students would, probably have a steeper learning curve in terms of adapting to a new learning environment. Um, and so we have a fair number of students that are going to be participating remotely in extended school year as well. Um, so from pre-K, you know, all the way up to age twenty-two, um, either our staff, um, adapted to whatever was happening at a particular grade level in a particular school, or created, um, individualized programs for students to the extent that the students and their families were able to engage. Um, that became kind of a, um, that was, that was a very big and a very important consideration. Um, and the only, well, the, you know, I've had lots of feedback, but probably the, the recurring theme that, that came through from families was, that our staff was giving them too much, that we had given them too many resources or too many supplementary activities or too much. So, um, I, I guess I, you know, I can't consider that a bad thing. I know that we'll have challenges, um, coming back. And there's some discussion about perhaps, looking at how extended school year is structured and maybe being able to tackle some of those challenges. Um, we, I, I, I just wanna say on, on the part of my department, we have processed every single IEP. Um, we have, we have, um, you know, we were given very little guidance relative to timelines or. We have, we have, you know, we were given very little guidance relative to timelines or mandates or anything like that. And we just plowed ahead. So as far as moving forward, every student has an updated IEP. That was a lot of work, but I think that it was the right thing to do. And I'm optimistic about, you know, working with my colleagues and moving forward.
Excellent. I imagine that was a lot of work to get through all the IEPs with the deadlines and meeting with families remotely, I imagine.
Right. We had, we, we had IEP meetings remotely. We're, this summer, as some of the guidance relaxes a little bit, we're going to. The one thing we, we want to focus on is completing some evaluations because evaluations really do need to be done face to face. So we're working on successfully doing that. But otherwise, you know, we, we were able to, to successfully, at least offer the opportunity for families to engage. Many of our families are very used to having their children at home and working with their children at home. Because of the, the grab, you know, the gravity of their needs. But overall, I think it was a very, very nice collaboration.
Great. Thank you so much.
My pleasure.
Heather, do you want to add anything on a district overview of the whole year, this, the end of this year, our progress for next year? Not that we know what it's going to look like, but how we want to address things? Heather, we can't hear you very well.
My microphone was working. There you go. I said, at our next school committee meeting, Mr. Smith and I will be presenting from a district perspective. But just to reiterate how amazing everyone has been and what, as horrible as everything was in terms of the nature of the illness. Just how exciting it was to see the collaboration that happened. And like Mrs. Dakin said, you know, people jumping out of their comfort zone and getting into the risk zone and, and how people helped each other to learn a lot of new things. And, and the fact that we were in great shape in terms of having one to one devices and a lot of personalized learning tools. And in terms of what you said about the gaps, we're lucky to have a lot of assessments that we can put in place as soon as the students come back in the fall. To figure out where those gaps are and to plan accordingly.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions you'd like to make? All right. Thank you all for your time this evening and.
Is this our, is this our last meeting with Mr. Fuchero?
Mr. Coming next week. Yes, it's your last one.
No, not coming next week. On behalf of all the administrators on here, we just want to say thank you, Rich, for all your time supporting us and working with us. And I appreciate you've treated, you've like mentored me since I got here in many different ways. And we'll miss you. We appreciate all of it. And we wish you the best of luck in your 716 new endeavors.
Thank you.
I know you well, Rich.
I can echo everything Tim just said. We're going to miss you. We appreciate everything you do. And I'm sure I'll still be capping on you for different stuff, Rich. So don't think you're going to get away from me that easy, man.
I'll always be available.
I'll be present next week and I guess I'm not ready to say goodbye anyway. So I'm just going to let that ride.
Well, I'm not going to be present next week, Rich, but thank you very much. And I'm not going to take it personal that you don't like my voice, but all the best to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for everything throughout the year. I don't know where I would be if it wasn't for Richard Fuchero. You are the heart and soul of East Long Meadow. This district is not going to be the same without you, but we have all learned from you and we will carry the values of Rich Fuchero forward beyond you. So your legacy is firmly in place, even though you won't be neck and neck with us from here on out.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rich.
Well said, Mr. Martin.
Thank you all.
Okay. Well, thank you all for your time this evening. Hope you enjoy the summer, get some rest and recuperate a little bit and ready to get back at it pretty quick. So thank you for being here tonight, all.
Thank you all very much.
Nice to see everyone. Stay healthcare.
Okay.
Next week you'll have Maple and Mountain View. And then as Heather said, we will present last. We reversed the order this year to allow the schools to present first and the district will present last and try to tie it all together.
Great.
Interesting.
It should be interesting.
Okay. We're moving right along then. We're going to go to Mountain View gift donation. Pam, please.
Yep. So let me first just say, those are some really kind words to you, Rich. Made me a little teary eyed for you. You are loved and I hope that you all felt that love. Okay. So the 4.2.1 in your packet is Principal Santinello from Mountain View requesting you to accept the $247 gift from the NEED project, which stands for National Energy Education Development Project. They have four teachers attend a workshop and in return they send a gift to the school.
I'll make a motion to accept the Mountain View gift from NEED project workshop of $247.
Motion has been made.
Second.
Second by Sarah. Discussion. Hearing none, all's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That carries five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll get that to positive.
Thanks, Pam.
Thanks, Pam. Okay. We have a waiver request. We have discussed that in executive session and I will entertain a motion for that waiver request.
To accept the waiver request as previously discussed.
Motion has been made by Bill.
Second.
Second by Rich. And remember, a vote in the affirmative is to approve the waiver. A vote in the negative is to deny the waiver. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
The motion fails zero to five. Thank you. Okay. We have a discussion about our committee reorganization meeting, which I believe needs to take place on or after July 1st. Is that correct, Gordon?
Yes, it has to take place on or after July 1st. It can take place, you know, in a meeting of scheduled at your choice. It can be a reorganization meeting and I suppose you also could loop it into just a regular meeting. You know, our first meeting is say in the beginning of August.
We're not meeting in July, is that the plan?
We can meet in July. I was just offering you.
As of now, though, we don't, we, we're not scheduled for July.
You don't believe so. Kath, did you know, we don't have anything scheduled in July? I don't believe so.
Not usually.
No.
It's a pleasure on the board.
I'll stay.
It's an easy one for you, right? Do we want to, do, we can either meet on the first with our new member or we can wait until the first week or first meeting in August.
The, I do know that Mrs. Marjorie Boucher had been out of the area. I don't know if she's still out of the area or what her plans for returning, say, on her before July 1st.
Okay. So personally, I like sticking close, as close to the rule as possible. So my vote would be to meet as close as possible to that July 1. And I know we potentially may meet next week live, meaning in the school committee room. However, a reorganization meeting could be held virtually, just to keep that it might, it'll probably be the only order of business unless something else comes up. We could do that, too.
I would echo those thoughts. I think we should keep it the way it's originally written because most committees with the charter will reorganize around, on or right around July 1st.
Right.
And continue, move, move forward that way. And to Greg's point, we could do it virtually or we could do it here live. It really doesn't matter. And I'm not sure if Beth was continuing to travel, given the pandemic and everything that's going on. So I'm not 100% sure what, where she is right now.
I think she was going to be around July 1st.
That's, I kind of got that impression as well, so.
How are folks availability during the day on July 1st?
I mean, it's only going to take 10 minutes. It's not going to be a long.
9:00 AM? 10:00 AM? Late sleepers? 11:00 AM?
Can we meet earlier?
I'm up at 5:30. What time you want to go?
I'm up at 5:30, too. So it really doesn't matter.
And rather do it outside of the, the workday if possible.
Okay. I was just trying to get it into Pam and Gordon's workday and Kathy's. What time, early?
If it's going to be that quick, maybe 7:30?
We can do 7:30. Sure.
It's remote.
Or how late? What's the earliest in the afternoon, Sarah?
Uh, 4:30.
Is there a preference?
Either, either one's fine.
4:30 might be easier, I'm thinking.
Well. Are we planning on, we do have plans for July 1st that evening at 6 o'clock, so.
Yeah. Meet quick at 4:30. 10 minutes later. If we're all mad at each other, then we won't have to hold through with our 6 o'clock plans, I guess, right? Doesn't make a difference. Is 7:30 all right? Can everybody make that? I don't want to inconvenience folks for a silly meeting. It takes five minutes. That's all right, though? Everybody's up? 7:30?
Yeah, I can. I'll get up.
Okay. All right. Let's do that then, please.
Okay. Thank you.
7:30 on July 1st?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Okay. We are, have come to the conclusion of our meeting. We are again meeting next week, next Monday. And with that, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Oh, moved.
Motion's made by Bill.
Second.
Second by Sarah. Discussion. Hearing none, all's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That carries five to zero. Good meeting tonight, all. Thank you all for your time and we'll see you again back here next week.
Thank you.
Take care, everybody.
Bye.
Good night.